You guys ready? Ready? You ready? Okay, we'll call the Berlin School Committee meeting to order of April 6, 2001 at 7:08. And we have, I believe, a presentation from some of our Berlin Memorial students.
Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. I have brought my second grade class here. We've been working on Writer's Workshop all year long at school, and we've been working on the six traits of writing, and one of the things we've been working on is developing our ideas. And as part of that, we've talked about providing good juicy details in our stories. And one of the ways we do that is we practice using our senses and describe things using our senses. So I asked the children to write a story about Berlin, describing it using their five senses. And when they finished these stories, they did such a great job that I felt like I had to do something with these stories. So what I did is I put them together into a magazine called My Town Sensory Stories About Berlin. And every child has a story in here, and I am pleased to announce that I have 14 kids in my class, and 11 of them are here tonight to share their stories with you. So they're very excited, and we will start our readings. Thank you.
I like Massachusetts. I live in Berlin. It is a good and small town. I live near a circle. In Berlin, I see trees, cars, roads, leaves, birds, bugs, and people. I feel trees, grass, air, and leaves. It feels good. In Berlin, I smell flowers, trees, grass, air, and leaves. I like the smell. I taste berries, apples, ice cream, and hot dogs. Yummy! I hear people, bugs, and a train whistle. I never see the train. I like Berlin. It is a fun place to live. Thank you.
I love to live in Berlin, Massachusetts. We have lots of farms that give us lots of milk, eggs, meat, and bacon. Massachusetts has good schools, fresh air, food, and awesome cats. Because we have a state we love, Berlin, Massachusetts is my favorite place to visit because the countryside is a nice place to visit. Our town has good fresh apple pie for animals, roses to touch, candles to smell, strawberries to see, strawberries to see, and orchids to hear. Berlin orchards is a good place to get our apples, and Indian Head Farm is a good place to get our blueberries. I like Berlin, Massachusetts, I mean Berlin, because I can go to school and do science. I like Berlin. Thank you.
I love Florida, but I live in Berlin. I like Berlin because it reminds me of my dogs. When I sit on my stone wall, I see birds go by and cars too. I see my apple trees growing stronger. You touch frogs, trees, and dogs and cats too. The animals are fairly friendly. I smell my mom and dad's cooking in our kitchen. The smell of cookies is fabulous. I taste my mom and dad's cooking, I mean, I taste my mom and dad's cooking in the morning, afternoon, and night too. I hear cars go by and birds too. I hear birds tapping on my window. These are the reasons why I like Berlin. Berlin's a happy place to live. There are a lot of nice people in Berlin. Thank you.
Ethan.
There are so many places to use your senses in Berlin. Here they are. One sense is sight. You can see snakes and trees outside. You can see a school in Berlin. My favorite thing to see for sight is snakes. Another sense is smell. You can smell fresh air, pine, fresh rain, and honey. My favorite is lavender. Then there's taste. You can taste sandwiches, ice cream, and apples. My favorite is chocolate. You hear lots of things like birds' wing echoes and coyotes. My favorite is crickets. There are lots of things to touch. You can touch grass, cats, and grass, no, and oak. My favorite is wolves. Those are all the senses you can use in Berlin. Thank you.
I love Berlin. It is the best time because I live so close to the school I don't have to take a bus. I can see dandelions, trucks, birds, airplanes, and trees. There's so much to see in Berlin. I can feel dandelions, tree bark, and leaves. That's what I can touch. I can smell flowers upon pines up food cooking on a grill, skunks, and fresh air. That's what I can smell. I taste apples, blueberries, ice cream, strawberries, wheat. What a yummy taste. I hear cars, bees, airplanes, dogs barking, birds chirping, geese, and a train whistle. There is so much to hear in Berlin. Berlin is the best town in the world. There is so much to see, touch, smell, taste, and hear. Thank you.
I live in the town of Berlin. I like it, I like it in Berlin because it is nice and peaceful. There are so many smells in Berlin. I smell flowers and pine too. They smell really good. Don't you think so too? There are so many wonderful sights in Berlin. I see hummingbirds. Wow, I think their colors are really amazing. There are so many things to feel in Berlin. I feel horses. They feel so soft. I also feel cows and chickens too. There are many different tastes in Berlin. I taste ice cream and push pops. They taste really good. Don't you think so too? There are so many sounds in Berlin. I hear wolves. They sound scary to me. If you heard them howl, you would agree. That's what Berlin is like. That's why I like Berlin so much. Thank you.
I live in Berlin. I love Berlin. In Berlin, you can see trees. Also, you can see cars, and you can see people. There are lots of things to see in Berlin. In Berlin, you can touch trees. You can taste, I mean, touch leaves blowing in the wind. Also, you can touch grass. In Berlin, you can smell flowers. You can also smell trees and pine cones. There are lots of things to smell in Berlin, smell in Berlin. In Berlin, you can taste apples. You can also taste ice cream and hot dogs. There are a lot of things to taste in Berlin. In Berlin, you can hear bugs and crits, crickets. Also, you can hear a train whistle. There are a lot of things to hear in Berlin. Berlin is awesome to live in. It is right to live in! Berlin!
I live in the best town in the world. It is called Berlin, and I love it. It is a small town. I usually see trees, roads, cars, and maybe birds. Trees mostly are not near roads. Birds fly over the road. I mostly touch air and the soft or spiky grass. The air does not have a texture. The grass does have a texture. Sometimes I smell flowers, air, hawks, and pine trees. The pond smells yucky because it has dead fish in it. In summer, I taste ice cream. It is very yummy. In spring, I taste strawberries. Sometimes I hear the train whistle. It is very loud. Berlin is best, it is the best town in the world. I love it, I love it, I love it. Thank you.
I love Berlin. Berlin is where I was born. Berlin is a fun place to live. I see children playing in Berlin. I see dogs playing. I see lots of birds. You can touch trees. Trees make the air good for me. I am to breathe. I can touch flowers that are on the ground. I smell flowers, and it smells like perfume. I smell the cut grass. I smell the leaves when they fall, fall on the trees. I taste chocolate. Chocolate tastes like ice cream. I love blueberries. They ta- taste like strawberries. I hear a dog barking. It is loud. I hear the birds singing. I love Berlin. The world is yours and mine. I love the world, and you do too. Thank you.
I love Berlin. Berlin rocks. I love Berlin because I have the best second grade teacher. The town of Berlin is very pretty. I see lots of things. I see dandelions, birds, children playing, an airplane, and bees. Scratch, scratch. When I climb a tree, I feel the scratchy tree bark. In the fall, I feel itchy dry leaves. In winter, I like to feel the cold snow with my hand. In Berlin, I smell lots of things. I smell flowers, the pond, food cooking on the grill, pines up, spoons, and fresh air. I like to eat apples, ice cream, and strawberries from Indian Head. I also like to eat blueberries and snow. In Berlin, I hear a car honking, a dog barking, a bird chirping, geese, the train horn, and an airplane. I really love Berlin. Berlin is a great town to live in. Thank you.
I live in the town of Berlin, Massachusetts. I like Berlin, Massachusetts. Berlin rocks. I see hummingbirds, I see yummy strawberries. These are other things I see. Tomato school, trees, trains, the mall, and Lowe's. I touch cats, and grass, snow, and dirt. I can also touch chickens, cows, horses, and pools. There are lots of wildlife in Berlin. In Berlin, I smell pine trees and flowers. The flowers are pretty, and the trees are too. I like getting apples out the orchard. They are fresh. I hear birds and crickets and wolves. When it's raining, I hear the tapping of rain. I like Berlin. Do you?
Thank you very much.
It was great. You all did a great job. Thank you very much for coming. Just in case people don't know, the teacher is Deb, the favorite second grade teacher is Deb Elias. I didn't introduce her, so I wanted to make sure you all knew who that was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you. Girls and boys, it is excellent job. Oh, you're welcome. Thanks for bringing us. I got you recorded. I think I got you. Go back a little further. Now we see you. Go up next to your brother. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know how you're gonna follow that act.
Do we have to?
I don't. Let's go home.
That was great.
It was very nice. They were all very brave. Good job.
They just worked so hard, and I was just so proud of them. A few of them, when they were reading, it just, I had to hold back tears because they've just come so far this year, and I'm so proud of them.
You should be. You've done a great job. They were all so poised. How long did it take you to do that, the whole project?
They actually began these stories in January, and then we pretty much finished them by mid-Fbruary, and then it took me a couple of weeks to type them all up.
Okay. Ready for the budget hearing? Or, yeah?
We are, you are, I think.
Okay. I'm actually trying to think about the right way to walk into the details of what you have in front of you, which is the detailed, well, the budget that we have, and our proposal for how we get to the place where we've committed to, to the town, and where we believe we can get to. I'm just thinking about whether or not I want to take a step back from that and just kind of cover a few overview statements. So now that I've said that, I think I will do that. The last time, if you remember, what we've done prior to this was to get through a process to bring all of the schools to as close to the goal, to the target, as we possibly could within the budget. So in other words, not impacting programs, not impacting staff. And I've said this a number of times, I'll say it again because I don't think I've said it at this particular meeting. When I say impacting programs, what I mean is that we haven't either reduced programs or we haven't eliminated programs in the two years prior to this and up until that part of the phase, but we absolutely have impacted programs because we continue to chip away at the resources that we have in order to really support the programs that we want. We haven't really been able to grow, and we've been able to do some things from a curriculum perspective. We've been able to purchase materials, but we've been able to do so while taking away from other parts of the budget. So we have an impacting program as time has gone on, and unfortunately, we will continue to do that as long as the budgets continue to be a challenge and there aren't enough resources to take care of everything that we want to. So we got through that phase of all three schools, and at that point, before we got to the program, to the staffing piece, Berlin Memorial was about eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand dollars away from the target. And remember, the target was the overall, bringing into the town requests, an overall amount of level funding, as long as, and level funding being across both of the Berlin Memorial and Tohoto Assessment entities, as long as the assessment at Tohoto wasn't impacted by enrollment shifts, which we did last year as well. And indeed, there was an enrollment shift, and so there is an impact to Berlin in terms of enrollment because there are more Berlin students at Tohoto from last year than there are this year, and so there is a little bit of an impact, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So getting to that phase of the process, Berlin Memorial was about eighty-eight thousand dollars away. Boylston Elementary was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars away. And at that point, Tohoto, there was an increase to Berlin at a hundred and eighty thousand, and Boylston was level for the Tohoto Assessment. That assumed, though, that we reduced the Tohoto budget by two, by two-hundred, two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's how far away we were when we finished that phase, and then we had to go in to start looking at programs. So we were looking across all, and I realize that this is the Berlin Memorial meeting, however, it's all connected, so I want to make sure that people have kind of the big picture before we get into the details of the Berlin proposal. So we looked at both of the elementary schools to see whether or not there was a way that we could modify the elementary budgets, and that would reduce the enormous reduction that we would have to do at Tohoto, the two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And even at that, that would still increase the Berlin amount at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars or so. So we felt as if we could take a little bit more away from both the elementary schools, and that would reduce the Tohoto regional by about fifty thousand dollars. So that's kind of where we are before we get to our kind of proposal, where the Berlin Memorial was away from our target of about a hundred thousand dollars. Boylston Elementary was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away approximately, and then Tohoto was two hundred thousand dollars away. So from that point, now we have to figure out, so how are we gonna get to these, how are we gonna close the gap? And in Berlin Memorial, and one of those things is on this sheet, we had a reduction in the sped out-of-district tuition of about thirty-three thousand dollars. So that brought Berlin Memorial down to about sixty-seven thousand dollars. We then, I guess that's kind of where we are at this point. So we have, so we're at sixty-seven thousand dollars away from the target, and we have an impacted program and/or staff. And now comes the hard part, and we have to impact program and staff. And so, again, looking across the entire system and trying to look anywhere except for providing services that are directly in front of students, essentially direct service to students. I looked at the central office to see whether or not there was somewhere in the central office staffing that we could reduce, and this is the same as what I presented at the region, so the school committee has heard this, but this group hasn't heard this. We looked across the central office staff, and we've actually identified two positions at the central office that we're able to reduce, a combination of eliminating one and reducing another, and that actually reduces, in elementary schools, their budgets by thirty-one thousand dollars each, and at Tohoto, sixty-two thousand dollars. And for people who don't understand this, all of the central office expenses and staff are, we don't have our own budgets, not our own separate budget. Our budgets, our expenses are spread across all the three schools. So for example, my salary, twenty-five percent of my salary is in the Berlin budget, twenty-five percent of my salary is in the Boylston Elementary budget, and fifty percent is in the Tohoto budget. Same thing with John, same thing, everything in the central office. So when we impact personnel in the central office, it ends up reducing the school budgets. So when we reduce those personnel, that ended up bringing the Berlin Memorial budget down by another thirty-one thousand dollars, which means that right now, we're still, we still have a gap of about thirty-five or thirty-six thousand dollars. And I don't know if you will get a chance to see the email that I sent you all today. What we are prepared to do tonight is ask that you approve the bottom line number, which is what the town is expecting, but we don't have, what we're not prepared to do is to present to you the exact plan for how we're gonna do that because it has to do with personnel, and there are still a lot of unknowns. So for example, one of the things that we don't know is just exactly who the students will be when we open the doors in September, and we could end up with students that come in between now and the end of August that have different services that we're gonna have to address. We also are working off of the governor's budget numbers, and we still have the Senate and the House to play, and so we do have a plan in place. We do have a plan that we would be able to implement right now that would take care of the thirty-six thousand dollars. It does have to do with personnel. Those particular personnel have not been notified, so that's another reason why I'm not ready to actually say, here are the exact positions, but also those positions may change as time goes on. Unfortunately, we need to go bring to the town, if we want to adjust any of the numbers that we have that we've already given them, we have to do it by tomorrow morning. And so, given that this is the budget hearing, and this is the last meeting we'll have before the town meeting, I guess what I'm asking you to do is to allow us to go forward with those numbers. The central office personnel is the curriculum coordinator, and that position would be eliminated, and the technology coordinator, that position at the school side would be reduced, and he would be transitioned over to Tohoto, and he would help us take care of some of the Tohoto budget. So those are the two pieces that they've already been talked with. They know that those, those plans are in place for those two positions, but the rest of them are not, and so I'm not comfortable actually getting into the specifics of the rest of it. But we are confident that we can get to the thirty-six. We're confident we can get to the fifty-four at Boylston, and we continue to work on the Tohoto, which is the largest issue with the central office. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollar problem. We do have plans to get to the hundred and forty thousand dollars at Tohoto, but we're working with the staff, and we're working with Diane Tesari, who will be the new principal next year, the interim principal, to make sure that we've really thought through all of what it is that we're trying to do. So we think we have that taken care of. We have until next week to really get that nailed down. So that's kind of, I guess it's a little more than an overview, but that's where we are, and that's how we got to this place. Do you want to do anything more on the sheets that you have?
Well, we've heard the detail before, but I don't know if it's the budget hearing, whether you want me to go through it and highlight some of the major changes in the budget, or...
I suppose, I suppose I'll leave it up to the school committee. You've got the details on here. We can talk through that if you've got, so this page is the typical page that you've seen, and you can see down in the bottom where we were before we had the sixty-six thousand dollars, and then when we reduced the sixty thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars, that's the, that's the total. And on the other side, you'll see the breakout of reduced central office professional staff by one and a half FTE, and then reduced personnel in parentheses to be determined. That's the thirty-six thousand. And that gets us to the number two million, six fifty-nine, three oh two, which is what we would like to recommend to the FinCon to go forward. The other point I want to make is, what that will do, it was, it will also adjust the Tohoto number, and we won't be able to get a vote from the region until next week, but if you approve this number, we'll be able to go to the FinCon, let them know about that, and indicate to them, as a result of that, the bottom line will not change, but the Berlin Memorial budget will be adjusted, the Tohoto budget will be adjusted. And then they can put that in their books, but we do have to go to the region committee next week because we have these separate committees, and be able to get approval before we can actually say to the FinCon, that's the number that got voted on.
Sure. Would you like to hear more detailed explanation of... What's required for the budget hearing? Do we need to have you go over this possibly?
I don't know that it's required. We could certainly do that. It's, it's, other than the sixty-six, it's essentially the same numbers that has been presented in the past, but we can certainly do that.
Just go through the highlights. Some of the more highlight things. In terms of the second page items, the budget worksheet, you have FY eleven in the left budget, the twelve proposed budget, dollar change, percent change, and then what each component represents as a total of the, of the pie, I guess you would call it. This does not, the top numbers do not reflect any of the proposals that Brian just went through to close the gap. This is, you know, it reflects the information with the reduction in the special ed tuition, but it doesn't reflect the numbers to reduce, eliminate the remaining sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that plan, whichever plan is implemented, would change these numbers. So in terms of administration, the FY eleven budget is a hundred and forty-six, six forty-eight, and for twelve, the proposal is a hundred and forty-six, one thirty-eight, so it's a reduction of five hundred and ten dollars. And if the proposal planned that Brian just went over is implemented, the professional salaries line item would be reduced for the tech coordinator for part of his salary. Instructional, the budget for instructional category was two million, one ninety-two, eight twenty-two. It's two million, two forty-five, six twenty-one is the proposal. That's an increase of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Some of the specifics under that, professional salaries are up a hundred and twenty-three, three eighteen. The major components for that, obviously, as we've been saying right along, there are no cost of living funds within this budget for any employee category, including the professional salaries for instructional. So there's no budgetary impact there, just making the point that no funds have been included for cost of living adjustments. We have provided funding for...
Sorry, just to make, just to highlight another point about that. Even though we haven't included them, we understand that their negotiations are still ongoing, and if there is an impact, a positive impact in terms of expenses that come out of those negotiations, our assumption is that we will subsume them within the existing budget. And so that's another reason why the current plan might not work if there is any change in negotiations. But, so, we, we don't have money in there for COLA, but we absolutely realize that negotiations are ongoing, and that may change.
So as I indicated, contractual obligations, including steps, lanes, and longevity increases, comprise thirty-nine thousand, four fifty-three. We have a teacher who's been out on leave of absence, returning, and that's seventy-four thousand, five hundred, and that's an increase to the budget. An impact of implementing the full-day kindergarten program is an increase of sixty thousand, eight seventy-two. Basically, we're increasing one teacher by halftime... Basically, we're increasing one teacher by halftime and transferring the funding for the second teacher from the tuition-based revolving fund to the budget. Impact of, we had some teacher-staff turnover. That's a reduction of almost thirteen thousand in the budget. Expectation is that person will be replaced with someone at a lower salary. Then we, funding a greater portion of the preschool teacher from the preschool revolving fund. So that's a reduction to the budget of ten thousand, because we're using an alternate funding source for that individual. Reduced, originally, we, we had reallocated the curriculum grant coordinator's time last year, or I should say the current year FY eleven. She was in the budget for point four FTEs, well, forty percent of her time. And she was being budgeted at twenty-five percent of her time, which was a twelve thousand dollar reduction. But as Brian just indicated, the, the new plan update would have eliminated her salary completely. So that would be additional savings on top of that amount. And then we looked at the professional development stipends, and thirteen-six we can fund out of grants, primarily the rural schools grants that Berlin Memorial receives. So those are the major items, and again, that professional salaries increases by a hundred and twenty-three thousand or seven point two seven percent. So we have some, obviously some increases and decreases, but that's the net effect. Next category I'm going to hit under instructional, and I'm only hitting the major changes to the budget, are going to be under the other salaries category. That's a reduction of forty-two thousand, two forty-nine over the current year. That primarily from two areas. We refunded a portion of tutor salaries out of grants, the, our ed jobs grant, which the federal government put out this year. We've been able to bank tho, those funds and are applying it for next year. So that's helping us reduce the impact on the budget. And then we had a reduction of one FTE for the ABA tech salary, going from three FTEs to two one, two FTEs, so it's a reduction of a person. That's almost a twenty-six thousand dollar salary savings. So that combination is a reduction of the forty-two thousand, two forty-nine. Next area under instructional will be contractual services, is being reduced by twenty thousand, nine oh four. Again, from two primary areas. As a result of changes in student IPs, reduction in service costs of twelve thousand, five hundred. And then we entered in some new copier leases, and we're able to get a three-year maintenance free lease for our machines, so that saved us almost fifty-nine hundred dollars in that area. So those are the two main areas that comprise a reduction of almost twenty-one thousand dollars. The next category we're going to jump down to is other school services, and the one major change here is in contractual services. And that's the savings from going to a full-day K program. Right now, we have busing midday, and so by going to full K, we'll be eliminating the midday busing. So that saves us about the eleven thousand, four sixty-nine there. And then the only other major area in terms of expenses within the budget would be the special ed out-of-district tuitions, where in the current year FY eleven, we did not have any students going out of district. And for FY twelve, we're budgeting for one student, which we were able, through the course of the budget, we originally had estimated a little over seventy thousand. And with the placement being identified, we were able to reduce that to thirty-six thousand, seven eighty-nine. So that's the other major adjustment of the budget. So in terms of total expenses, FY eleven is two million, eight twelve, eight ninety-seven, compared to FY twelve, which is two million, eight ninety-eight, eight forty-six. It's an increase of almost eighty-six thousand dollars, or a three percent increase. To that, we apply our school revenues, which is comprised of school choice, our special ed circuit breaker. And we had for FY eleven, our foundation reserve or pothole monies. So school revenues that we applied to the eleven budget was a little over a hundred and forty-one thousand. And for FY twelve, we're applying school choice funds of a hundred and fifty-three, oh seventy-nine. That compares to the hundred and two for FY eleven. The increase of fifty-one, oh seventy-nine was a result of implementation of the full-day K program, because we're eliminating the tuitions. And the state will not be recognizing those enrollments until, into their chapter seventy formula, until the following school year. And so in that interim year, we're, we're going to fund it out of the school choice during that time period. Circuit breakers is a reimbursement program from the state. It runs one year in arrears, and it's based on eligible cost reimbursement. And so we basically had a reduction in the cost pool that was eligible for reimbursement. So we're going from twenty-six, four forty-nine in revenues for FY eleven to nineteen thousand, seven seventy-six. It's a reduction of almost sixty-seven hundred dollars. And then the pothole foundation reserve money of thirteen thousand, those are kind of like one-time grants, and the state hasn't been funding those in a couple of years. That was just money we had left over that we had applied to FY eleven. Those funds are no longer available. So the net effect is an increase of thirty-one thousand, four oh six in terms of school revenues. When you apply those to the expenses, the, it results in a town appropriation, which for FY eleven was two million, six seventy-one, four forty-eight. And for FY twelve, the proposal at that stage before implementing the plan that Brian referred to was two million, seven twenty-five, nine ninety-one, or fifty-four thousand, five forty-three more than FY eleven, which represented a two percent increase. Instituting the proposed additional reductions that Brian went over a few minutes ago, that's nearly the sixty-seven thousand dollars additional reductions from the budget. That would end up reducing the budget down to, for proposal for FY twelve, to the two million, six fifty-nine, three oh two that he referred to previously. That nets a reduction of a little over twelve thousand dollars as compared to the FY eleven town appropriation, which is a point four, five percent reduction from the prior year. Town appropriation makes, made up in terms of school funding, almost ninety-five percent in FY eleven. And it's just a little short of ninety-two percent for FY twelve. But that's kind of the overview of the main items for the budget and the reasons for the changes from one fiscal year to the next.
So just to make one comment about some of the reductions that we've talked about. We do believe that the reductions that we are proposing will not have a stark reduction in services for our students. We have potentially three grades that will have class sizes of around twelve next year. And so the reduction of some of these positions aren't necessarily needed because of the really small class sizes. So we do believe we'll be able to provide the same level of services. We think it's a, it's a responsible budget, it addresses the needs of the town, and it essentially buys some time when hopefully we, as we've talked about, we can think about actually bringing some more, or keeping more resident students into the district. And unless that trend changes, then this challenge will continue as time goes on. So that's the proposed budget.
Can I ask a question? You had talked about the technology coordinator and the curriculum. Can you tell me what they do, what their, because I don't know essentially what their job is in the...
Yeah, so the curriculum coordinator has been, essentially the curriculum coordinator has spent time at the elementary school levels. The position is supposed to be across all three schools. But because of the needs of the curriculum implementation, of the math programs that we've talked about, literacy programs that we've talked about, that role has really been used at the elementary schools. We have a lot of new programs that are in place, we have a lot of work to do to implement those programs. But we feel as though that position, it won't have that much of an impact. And we have the principals, we have now, we have two principals who understand teaching and learning, understand curriculum, and they will really take on the primary responsible responsibility of implementing the programs now that we've got them in place. So the position will be missed, but there's an awful lot of work that can be done without that, without that position. We feel as though at Tohoto, the department heads really have that curriculum responsibility. And so they're really taking on the, the challenge of making sure the curriculum is articulated. One of the things that we had hoped the curriculum position was going to do was actually focus on the transition between the elementary schools and the middle school in particular. We haven't really been able to pull that off. We do have a team of people that, from the sixth grade as well as seventh and eighth grade, are trying to get together to work on just, you know, that, developing that curriculum to make sure that that articulation happens. So that would probably be the biggest challenge for not having that position. But we think in terms of the elementary schools, as I said, we've got a lot of programs in place. And now it's a matter of teachers having time and kind of focus on making sure that those, that they learn the programs more and more, and they have an opportunity to implement those programs through professional development and a variety of other things. So the tech coordinator is a little bit of a different, we're approaching it a little bit different. As I said, we, we really need someone to zero in on the development of a technology plan for the new building. And so what we thought we could do is actually pull the tech coordinator out of the, a little bit away from the system-wide responsibility. We still have a piece of him, a piece of that position in each of the elementary schools. He's still responsible for making sure that the requirements for the SIMS report to the Department of Ed, which reports all the student data, as well as the staff data, make sure that those are still in place. But he'll really spend more time at the, at Tohoto, working on that technology plan. He's also going to help support the transition of the administration. So we have Diane Tussari, who's going to take on the dean of students. One of the ways we're going to try to get to the gap at Tohoto is not add a new person to that position, but actually try to fill that from within. And he would play part of that role. And I'll talk more about that transition when we get into next week. But, so we're going to use a part of him, pull some of the funds out of the elementary school to help support that, and he'll be more in Tohoto than, than cross-system.
Do you feel this will affect at all, because I know the teachers have been working together in the different elementary schools, and you talk about curriculum, you know, we're trying to align those a little bit. So everybody comes in at the same level, will that still be happening and...
Yeah, the intent is that absolutely that still happens. And it really depend on Carol and Paul and the teachers that now have these good connections to continue with that work and to bring all that together. And will mean that there'll be other people that'll have to pick up some of that coordination and responsibility without a doubt. But, but we think we can do that, so. And, you know, when we look at where we are with the budgets, we look at the, and even though the class sizes are still phenomenal across both elementary schools, we're, we're, again, we're hoping that we maintain that the teachers and the staff that are providing direct service in the short term, so that when the class sizes grow back up, we've got the teachers. So we're really, it was kind of a, do we, do we look at folks that are looking across the system? Do we look at folks that are providing direct service? So that's, that was kind of the balance, and we chose to leave the, leave the folks who provide the direct service.
It's a lot of information to digest from this afternoon. I am concerned about the curriculum coordinator position, because that's all we've been talking about for the last year, is trying to get the curriculum aligned between the two schools. And I happen to remember that it took us about three years to get the position put into the budgets. So once you lose the position, it will be gone, it will be difficult to get it back. You know, I, I know that you've done a lot of hard work in trying to come up with something that everybody can live with. I think that's a tough one to swallow. I think one of the things that would actually help to keep kids in district is to get this curriculum work done.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that you're taking that down to more of a local level with Carol and...
The curriculum work will continue to get done. The curriculum, I mean, it has to be done. And again, as, as I've described, because the programs are in place, now it's really up to the teachers and to the administrators to make sure that those continue to get implemented, and professional development continues to happen. So it's not that that work wouldn't get done, it means that there would be some of that coordination that would hap, would happen by other folks. We, we, we wouldn't recommend it if we thought it was going to drastically change the direction that we've been working on.
And, and the interim superintendent would be the one that would be holding people accountable to making sure that that's done, correct?
Principals really will be, will be the primary folks that will be holding teachers responsible and accountable for making sure the curriculum continues to get implemented. But, you know, interim superintendents certainly have that authority. Depends on how long the interim superintendent is around, what kind of focus they have, what kind of skill set they have. But by all means, they would, you know, I would, I would expect in the interim that the principals would really kind of take that on. And to be honest, both Paul and Carol have really done that already. They've already taken on that responsibility, they've made sure that those things are happening in the schools. They are the instructional leaders in the schools. And so, another, that's another reason why we feel that that's, that's a decision that won't change the, the direction that we'd be going in because of the skills and because of the capabilities of the principals we now have in place.
What would be, what would happen should, like, getting in next year or sometime next year, we decide that we want that position back?
You had to finance somewhere on the budget.
Well, absolutely, I, I agree with that, but I mean... I was trying to think of some, another way to work this, but I'm not sure I can.
Is there any way of ever asking, and I don't know how that, with the dates and the timing and everything, that works, is there ever the opportunity to go to the town and say, would you want to fund this position over, and be over the amount that the finance committee is recommending?
So right now, we're asking the finance committee to be, I think it's approximately a hundred and eighty over, overall, do I know if I have that, between Tohoto and Berlin.
So we're already asking them to...
So we're, we're already, oh no, it's more like, yeah, that's right. When we started this, it was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand that we were asking over what level funded was. They said, you need to bring that down. So we've brought it down as far as we can, we're actually ass, we're actually asking of them... We're actually asking of them... Well, we haven't done the adjustments to Hanta, but that's, is that minus that? If that's the adjustment for that.
Yes, that's the amount for Tohoto, right here.
So that's, so that's, and so it's about two hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for Tohoto.
We're here and that's where.
Yeah, okay, so overall, the overall increase to the town of Berlin is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So it's already a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars beyond what it is that they were hoping that we were going to come in with.
That's for both schools.
That's for both schools.
Right. Now, how far away are we from last year's Berlin Memorial level funded?
Twelve thousand lower.
Twelve thousand lower.
Right. And a hundred and eighty thou, and a hundred and ninety...
That's why we're having such a difficult time coming up with these cuts, I would imagine, right? If you're trying, if you will actually be getting lower than last year's level, last year's number for the...
Absolutely.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely. And in order to get to the place where we've increased the Tohoto by two hundred thousand dollars, that assumes that we decrease the Tohoto budget by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we could leave the Berlin budget the way it is, we could leave the Boylston budget the way it is, and essentially decimate Tohoto. We can make some adjustments on both the elementary schools and not have as much of an impact on Tohoto.
Right.
So I will say that we did take that as, as a challenge, and, you know, we're clearly, from my perspective, we're clearly not impacting the elementary schools near as much as what we're about to, how we're about to impact Tohoto. And again, I, I think with, with the plan that we have, we're not substantially impacting what we've been doing in either of the elementary schools in terms of services, in terms of curriculum, in terms of being able to continue to do the work that we've been doing.
Right.
Tohoto is a different story, but we're going to try to minimize that impact as much as we can.
Carol? I did just want to add to that, and I know it's difficult, because we are talking about a person in addition to a position, and that's...
We try not to, not to think about the position.
Position, right, exactly. And, but I did, if it's any comfort or helpful at all, my, my former position in my other district was curriculum specialist, and I've kept very current on what's happening in education and have been able to do a lot of work with our curriculum coordinator. I understand that position and what's expected. So I, I guess, what I'm saying is, I, I know what we need to do, and... So I, I guess, what I'm saying is, I, I know what we need to do and, and Brian shared about working internally now. We, we have a lot of wonderful programs in place. We have to work it now with, between, within our school and the other school and that's possible. It's really about the, the team effort from administrators and staff. Right now, it's, it's much more inward rather than looking outward to adding more on. So, so we really just have to get in their roll of our sleeves and, and I, I understand what's expected, so I don't, I don't know if that helps at all, just so that you, I don't know what the word for it is, but feel a little bit understanding that I do understand what needs to get done, so not to take away from that other person's role, but...
And you would ensure, continue, ensure that we continue and...
I have, I mean, that's really is my responsibility.
Because that's really important that...
Ultimately, even with a, even with a curriculum coordinator, and that's why so many districts have, or curriculum specialists, basically what happens, my job was cut. I mean, we were all cut across the board, the specialists, this was several years ago in my other district. It's, we still report and answer to the principal and that's, that's how it, it works. I mean, ultimately, the principal is responsible for, for that piece among the many others, but that is, that's our, that's our main focus, really, it's supposed to be, so...
So you're saying you're comfortable with the responsibility, added workload, that it may come, that it comes your way with this challenge?
Yes, I am and it, and it's, it's, it's hard to say that it's an additional workload.
Right, right.
Because everything we've been doing for both schools, I've been involved in as the principal, you know, what those decisions that are made are, we, we go through them together, so it's not, it's not an additional workload, so to speak. I don't, in that sense, I'm s...
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how else to...
With the, with the addition of Paul, as I said, I mean, Carol has taken on that curriculum role and that leadership role since she's been here. With the addition of Paul, we now feel like we have a team of administrators at the elementary level that, you know, not only understand teaching and learning, understand curriculum, understand how to work with their teachers to provide them the support to keep those things going. And that's really the ideal. You know, to some extent, when you have specialists that are not part of that core, then a lot of that work is kind of left to somebody outside of where it really should belong. And, you know, so we've got people who have those skills, who can do that work.
And the technology piece at the elementary school, the impact?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm not actually too, too worried about that because the, the tech coordinator didn't really spend a lot of time at the elementary schools in terms of providing technical support. And because of what we did when we added the, that, the tech specialist network administrator, who has phenomenal skills and he's really the hands-on person that's supporting...
That's the one we hired.
Yes.
Okay.
Beginning of last year.
Yeah.
Right. We hired him with a grant and we still have pieces of him in a grant, but he's provided really the, the, the level of technical expertise and skills that we've needed at, at all three schools. So he's really helped a lot of things move forward. And so that position, we're, we're maintaining. We think this shift in the tech coordinator responsibilities, again, won't impact, and we're also developing some really good skills at the elementary school. I mean, Pat Anderson here at Berlin is phenomenal for teaching students about technology competencies and we're trying to build that program up as well, so we actually don't feel like it will have an impact. Yep, yep.
Just to clarify, when you speak of Paul, you're speaking of the Boylston Elementary Principal?
Sorry, yes, Paul Goodhart, yes.
Just so in case anybody didn't know who Paul was.
Sorry about that, yes, thank you.
Is it appropriate to open questions for the...
Sure.
Do we have any questions on the budget hearing from the public? Any other questions from the school committee?
Um, yeah, I was going to see, I was going to ask you if the committee, I, I actually need some time to think about these, the last two proposed cuts that we just issued this afternoon.
This, this, I did talk about this at the last meeting, at the last region meeting.
Yeah, but we didn't know what the positions were.
The central office wanted to.
Right. No, we did not.
Okay.
I didn't know until this afternoon. So I'd really like some time to think about it and I would just ask the committee if they feel it's appropriate that a motion be made to approve the, the two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-one at this point and give us a little bit of extra time to think about it. I was going to suggest that possibly we'd get some kind of a school choice report too, to see how those numbers have been going for the last couple of years.
The only issue with that is the warrants need to be finalized. We actually, they were supposed to be finalized today. We bought a little bit of time, working with the FinCom to provide them with an update tomorrow morning. We could reduce what we recommend, we can't increase.
That's why I would prefer to vote the higher of the two numbers, because I know the FinCom isn't going to look very positively at us if we try to increase it at some point.
No, but then that's not going to help us with Tohoto. If we do that, then the, the Tohoto number...
We could also hear the discussion at Tohoto and see, maybe be able to help make us to, help us to make a decision. Maybe we post a meeting for Berlin the next day or something.
Nikki, do you have any thoughts, where you're thinking?
I just think it's such a tough decision. It's such a tough economy. I mean, we've given Brian, we've asked Brian to come in and, you know, present a fiscally responsible budget. I see what Chris is saying, when you lose a position, you don't get it back, but it's, it's really tough right now with the economy. I don't know what kind of funding we're going to get and, and it's just tough all around. And I hate to lose a position, but I, we can't tax, the taxpayers, you know, we have to think of our constituents who are paying taxes in this town.
We have a lot of constituents also in the audience that were saying, you know, align the curriculum.
But we aren't talking about not aligning the curriculum.
Right.
That will still be...
I think it'll still just be difficult.
That will still be the goal, curriculum better still continue to get in that direction and move in that direction.
We are, just one, one note about the school choice. We are, with, with this recommendation, we will be using twice as much school choice for the budget than we are actually bringing in. We're bringing in about seventy-six thousand dollars. In the estimation, typically we've budgeted around a hundred thousand dollars. There were some years that we didn't have to spend that, but you just never know, we have to budget accordingly. So we brought the hundred and fifty down to the hundred and two, which is what we budgeted normally. We would actually begin to spend what we bring in, I think, coming into probably two thousand and, coming out of two thousand and fourteen. So we have probably two or three years before we start spending what we're bringing in. So there is a little bit, there's certainly more time in Berlin than in the other two schools when we start running out of school choice, but that spiral is definitely going the wrong direction because we are definitely spending more school choice than we're bringing in.
Are we already doing that at Tohoto?
We'll be doing that for Tohoto for a while.
Right. I know that we used to do that in Berlin too and we did build it back up again.
Right.
But I, I don't think we've seen the numbers for a little while. Be nice to see, you know, what was done in the last like two, three years at least.
Well, last year we did a hundred and two and this year we're up to a hundred and fifty-three, which is right now.
Right.
And seventy-six is the most we've brought in at thirteen students. So I, I just, just, it's, we can certainly, we're certainly relying on school choice to create the kindergarten program, which we believe is a, not only is it exactly what we should be providing, but it's also an investment to help keep Berlin residents in Berlin Memorial. One of the things we'll talk about a little bit later are the school attending children and there's an enormous number of Berlin residents that are going to school and other places. And that's a trend that's really impacting all the schools and this budget challenge will continue until that trend really changes. So this is probably the, just the beginning. Again, unless that trend changes, this is just the beginning of some really challenging budgeting times because, you know, a great deal of money is being spent in other schools on Berlin and Boylston residents, so. Not necessarily that you'll have the money to put the program back.
Chris? I think you said that the, the, having the kindergarten program was, I think I wrote down sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy-two within, you know, in the budget hearing, is that the actual cost and we're moving, are we using fifty-one thousand, was it, in school choice?
Right, fifty-one thousand seventy-nine.
We made a promise to an awful lot of parents at this point that we're going to have the full done for kindergarten. Maybe this isn't the best year to do it, but I think if we're going to honor that, I think we need to take a look at possibly, just, just give this some time if we can.
Well, I'm comfortable with the recommendation of the two million six fifty-nine three oh two, so I believe, is there a motion on the table? Do, did you make a motion?
I don't think there was a motion.
One more comment. One of the things that, which we're not recommending, but we could certainly do, I guess I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get to the number that we can present to the FinCom so that what we need to go to the towns with is settled. Certainly as a school committee, you have the option to use more school choice, which would not impact that amount. So let's say if, if you can vote that amount that we can go forward with FinCom and you leave the gap up to us, we'll come back to you with more information about what that plan is. And if you decide that we really don't want to do that, we want to spend more money, we'll spend it, you can decide to spend it out of school choice and not ask the town for it. So we'll still recommend to the town what it is that we'll ask for the appropriation, but if you decide you, you don't agree with the budget we're proposing and you want to spend more money, you can choose to spend that out of school choice. Again, we're not recommending that now, but you can certainly do that.
So if we, just to, so I understand this. So if we voted now for the two million six fifty-nine...
Right.
We could come back and say, really, we don't think the, you know, getting rid of the tech coordinator, the curriculum, curriculum coordinator is really going to be a good thing to do, so we want to, you to take some of that money from school choice and we can put it back in.
Right.
But that would still change the bottom line of the budget, which is what the...
But this, what this is, is the appropriation. It would change the bottom line of the school committee budget, you're absolutely right, but it would not change the appropriation that we're asking of the town, which at this point is the most important number.
Okay. But the appropriation, I'm not, I'm not following, I'm sorry.
So when, when you, when you vote for an appropriation, right, you're, the school committee is responsible for not only the money that is received from the town, but also all of the revenues that you receive, whether a circle breaker or a school choice and so on. You don't ask the town for how you spend that money. You ask the town for how you, to spend the money that you get from the town. So the bottom line of the school committee budget can be different than the amount we get from the town to spend. And if you look at the Tohoto budget, it's, it's vastly different. We asked the towns for an assessment of about, I don't know, two or three million dollars, but we're spending seven million dollars because the rest of that money is under the purview of the school committee.
Can I, can I ask a question of a former finance committee member from Berlin? Just if that would be something that they would look fondly on if you were to, which scenario, I guess, would they, would they look more fondly on? Whether you voted the actual bottom line of the lower number or just for now voted the higher number and then, and then perhaps went to the lower number later?
Well, they have to balance their budget.
Right.
So if you give them a higher number...
Okay.
They'll either cut it on their recommended budget, but they have to produce a balanced budget for town meeting.
Okay.
So if you vote, you understand, if you vote the higher number, then they're just probably going to cut, they have to cut something somewhere to balance the town budget. When they came in and saw the selectmen, they were still thirty thousand dollars short. In other words, they had to cut thirty thousand dollars somewhere to fit within the levy capacity.
And so if we voted a higher budget, that's just going to expand that number on thirty thousand plus?
Well, I mean, I think they'll just keep whatever number they have for you in the budget. So you could vote a high number, but...
Right.
So we're in the same spot than if we went later and, and said, can we take some of these school choice funds?
You just would eliminate that one choice.
But when, when you did it from the, when you do it from the school choice funds, you're not impacting the budget you're asking from the town.
No, because it's school money and not town funds.
Correct.
And that, so the only thing that voting the lower of the two bottom lines would do is take away your ability to go to the town and say you want to raise an appropriate sixty thousand dollars.
See, I don't...
There is no reason to raise an appropriate...
I'm not doing that.
Okay, you're, okay, you're right.
There's no reason appropriate that that, the budget is maxed out, so you have to tell money for cash or something.
Right, okay.
Carol?
You were asking if you could use, forget the numbers because I've lost you there, but if you could use school choice money to keep the curriculum coordinator's position.
Or the technology, whatever position.
Technology. But we still have to think about, you're thirty-six thousand dollars and you're looking to still cut positions at Berlin Memorial School.
Correct.
So is there enough money to keep those, whoever that is, thirty-six thousand dollars in school choice money? And, I mean, are you looking, I guess I should say, are you looking at school choice money to offset that thirty-six thousand dollars?
Well...
Because I don't know who that, we don't know who that is.
Right, it's a great question. And if, if the school committee directed us to relook at that position, then we would have to come back with a plan. But as you say, that's only one piece of the plan because the other part of the plan are other staff in Berlin Memorial and we would actually look at those positions before we look at the curriculum coordinator. So it's not just the thirty-one, it's really the sixty-seven. And that, the, the, the other reason that we looked at the central office is because we felt like that would help all three schools. We can't not do one of those positions in one school. I mean, we could, we'd make it a part-time position, but that doesn't really make any sense. And when you look at the whole, the whole picture, it's, it was one of the ways that we could get to where we need to without impacting teachers. So that was one of the things that we really looked for. So we would have to look at all of it, but if the school committee directed us to go back and relook at this, then we would, we would have to come back with a different plan. So, say that answer.
But you're asking the school committee to look at it and not...
I'm not, I'm not hoping that they don't.
But not knowing, not knowing what their, what those positions or that position is. So you're asking them to make it, am I following that right?
You are, and, and I've been purposefully vague on those positions because of all the unknowns that we still have in front of us. We've got a plan in place for right now where everything stays the way it is. Then we would recommend that we implement that plan and we would be, then we would provide the details of that plan. Again, we don't...
But they're saying that they want to maybe use school choice money to keep the curriculum coordinator, which is a valuable position, but you still have, they're not sure who this thirty-six thousand dollars is.
Right, we still have, we still have other positions that, right, you're exactly right.
We can decimate school.
Right, you have to look at all of it and see whether or not, you know, school choice would be used for any of that, all of it, or...
But you're looking at coming into another year, which we will maybe not have any school choice money.
That's right.
And then we are going to really be strapped to, at the local level, making a huge impact.
It's a, it's, you know, when you, when you, when you think about the other school districts and how much staff they have already lost, and this is the first time that we've actually even impacted staff, and we're just, we really are just beginning. And if things don't turn around, it's going to get worse. And so this is kind of a, a small gradual step to kind of buy some time, hopefully, so that things will turn around, but if, you know, if we can do a little bit now, then you're exactly right, next year won't be as much. But if we don't do anything now, next year, two thousand thirteen, and actually I'm sure Judy can confirm this, not only two thousand thirteen, we're hoping that two thousand thirteen actually turns around in terms of the economy, that's not going to get to us until two thousand and fourteen if we're lucky. So we have two or three years of really, really challenging times. And so what we're trying to do is take a little bit of a step now to make sure that two thousand thirteen and fourteen aren't as bad as they potentially could be. So that's kind of the challenge in front of us.
And I just wanted to care, clarify for Carol that when I, when I'm speaking and saying we could go and get school choice funds, I'm not meaning specifically for the technology person or the curriculum person, I mean for whatever need we have for whatever employee. I'm not just, yes, because I was using that for the person.
Still that at thirty-six in addition to possibly wanting to, to, you know, keep curriculum or technology, whatever, we still at thirty-six, so.
Right. Yep, no, that's good, yeah. And, and actually probably, if we were to come back with a different plan, we would really focus on those other positions first and, you know, the, the central office positions would be secondary in terms of the plan, so, but we'll have to see.
Judy, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to agree with you, well, and with Brian. You, you, you're spending more school choice than you're bringing in. It, it's kind of like how we try to get away from spending free cash in the town budget. It's a non-reoccurring revenue all the time and you just dig your, dig your hole... It's a non-reoccurring revenue all the time and you just dig your, bigger hole, bigger hole until...
Yeah. And at this point, fortunately, there is still some school choice revenue, even though it's being used up, that will kind of help us in terms of emergencies and so on for, you know, a little bit of time anyway. And, you know, I still think that using that for trying to create the kindergarten program is actually a good investment, even though we're talking about losing positions, because I think that will help kind of turn the tide of the students. We have, you know, people that want to come because it's full-day kindergarten program. So, those are the kinds of things that we should be investing in and really kind of making sure that the money that we're spending is being spent wisely, so.
And we're getting those funds back from the state next, starting next year.
Yeah, right. Not twelve, but the following. The state and the taxpayers. I mean, part of the budget, it'd be part of what we'll be, you know, getting for educating students, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions?
I mean, you also look at last year's number, which was the same number as the year before because we tried to commit level funding and we free-level fund this year, then next year and it's expected to level fund again. It's staying with the lower number every single year also, which is more and more difficult because the number hasn't gone up at all. So, it will be more difficult if you don't try to fight for, you know, not fight for, but, you know.
Advocate for?
Right. Or something other than...
Challenging times to be advocating for more money.
No, no, I mean, slow rise, a slow rise, I suppose, is better than having to go for an override another year or so.
Okay. So, what is the, do I hear any motions on the table?
I would move that we, how am I going to word this? That's what I would ask.
Yeah. How do we make a motion so that we have the opportunity to use additional school choice if we want to? But using your number for the town.
I think that's all you need to do for now because as a school committee, you can always, you always have access to those funds.
Okay. Can I make it part of the vote, the motion if I want to and say? So, I'd like it to be part of the motion, just for next year when we come back and look at the minutes and say, well, what happened with the budget this year and what did we do? I'd like to leave that open.
Okay. I don't know.
Do you want me to make the motion?
If you have better language.
Well, you're assuming that you're going to vote the number for...
I'm going with the two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine.
All right, then you would like to make the motion for the bottom line of the budget to be...
Two thousand six hundred...
Two million.
Two million, I'm sorry.
Six hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and two. And that, at some point, that the school committee will relook at the amount of money being used in school choice to help support the budget.
That would be my motion then.
Certainly have the right to do that.
And who made that motion?
Doesn't matter.
I don't know.
We could put down.
I crossed it, Nikki, and put down you.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
She made the motion, so I'm seconding, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can't go back up again.
No.
Okay. Although I, I just...
Thank you.
Same old routine. So, is that with the public budget plan? We are in the process of approving payroll and payable warrants. We'll move on to the consent agenda for the minutes, open session minutes for March second and March ninth. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the March second minutes, I think it was page two, right above the principal's report, it says, "At this point, student programs and staffing have not been impacted. Budget does not include funding for cost of living increases, longevity steps and lane changes." I believe that's not true. It does include longevity steps and lane changes. I would just, I would just totally, longevity steps and lane changes because I don't think that was, I don't think that was true.
The budget does include funding for, no, the budget does not include funding for cost of living increases. It does include funding for longevity steps and lane changes.
So, just cross out longevity steps and lane changes?
Okay. You can do that. I mean, the, if you want a complete statement is, "The budget does not include funding for cost of living increases. It does include funding for longevity steps and lane changes."
Either way. Just wanted it to be accurate.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We received a couple of communications. One which I would like to recognize was a communication that was from a citizen, not from a Berlin Board of Selectmen regarding school choice. And we received a thank you from the Berlin Memorial kindergarten teachers regarding the full-day kindergarten program. We acknowledge both of those communications. Do we have any communicate, or petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda? Quiet bunch tonight. Then we will move on to our CPAC report. Jill?
Last night we had Carla Bingsway, an organizer, organize for kids come and talk to us about how to organize all your special education and paperwork. And we did a little role-playing and she had example binders set up of all the different sections that you can create to help organize your paperwork. And she suggested not only for special ed kids, but if you have a parent or a child with medical issues, anything like that, anytime you've got a lot of paperwork. So, that was good. We got a lot of good points out of that. We are in the midst of collecting nominations for our annual excellent educator awards. We sent out letters to all the parents and they have until April fifteenth to submit their nominations to Maureen Norville. And we'll be handing those, the awards out during Teacher Appreciation Week in May. And then we have our next general meeting coming up on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth at Tohato at seven, just a general meeting.
Thank you, Jill. Move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have in the, under the building committee, we are, actually tomorrow, we'll be opening bids for filed, the filed sub-bid, which is the, a lot of the, like, electrical and the small entities that the, that the general contractor will be responsible for. And we have the general contractor bid opening on, I think, the twentieth. I think that's correct. So, we're getting close to having a general contractor and that's the big step that happens. And then we, we expect to go through the negotiations with the G C up and, up until the beginning of May, and we're hoping that the beginning of May, we'll have a general contractor on board and negotiate a, the contract with that firm. And we hope that it's in time for the groundbreaking, which we have scheduled for May seventeenth. And right now, the time is one-thirty and that may shift a half an hour or so. We, the building committee decided to do it at one-thirty because we really like to have the students actually be able to participate. So, we want to get it to a time when, and I actually work with the school committee, the regional school committee on this as well, to make sure the students have time to get out there and go through the ceremony, but then just be dismissed and go right to the buses. As well as if parents are picking up their children from Tohato, at the end of the day, they may be able to participate as well. So, we're trying to figure out the right time. So, it may be a little later than that, but we're not really sure. But definitely Tuesday, May seventeenth. So, that'll be a big day. So, that's that. And the next is October one enrollment.
You have a question?
Sorry, sorry, yep.
If you don't feel that the bids are low enough, do you have the option of forcing a rebid?
No. Well, let's see, that's an interesting question. I, I'm pretty sure the answer is no. And that's because we went through a fairly rigorous process to pre-qualify all firms. So, anybody that is now bidding is a qualified vendor and they'll actually, can, so unless we, when we look at the bids, if they don't fit the requirements that we have, we can throw them out that way and we don't have anybody that's provided a bid that meets those requirements, then we can say, we didn't get anything, we can rebid. But if there is one that meets the requirements, then we have to take it.
One of our requirements is an affordable building. So, they all fit, they don't come in low enough, right? So, you know, it's, it's a hard time out there and there's a lot of leverage we have in this project, is all I'm saying. Let's do this.
Yeah. Yeah, it, yeah. Unfortunately, because of the process that we're using, we really have to accept whatever comes in the door and the little bit. It's really about the requirements and specifications. And if they meet those, then we have to take those. If it turns out that they come in higher than what we've anticipated, then we gotta manage the project so that we reduce other things, so that we maintain the project budget. So, that's, that's one of the things that the building committee has the responsibility to do. We are finding that the numbers aren't, the bids aren't coming in as low as they have in the last several months, which was as high as fourteen, fifteen percent. But we are hearing they're still in double digits, so like ten, eleven percent. So, we're still hopeful that they're going to come in lower than what we've got. And so, keep our fingers crossed.
It all got ran through, run, ran, run, run through an estimator. So...
Multiple estimators.
Cut stuff, we've cut stuff down to make it so that it would fit the estimator.
Yeah. We have the architects estimate, we actually had MSBA had a role in estimating. So, we feel pretty good about where the numbers are and what we're seeing. And this building is not, you know, number one, it's not a renovation. It's a fairly straightforward design. So, I mean, we'll see when they come in, but we're feeling pretty confident that we'll be okay. Any else about that? October one enrollment. So, you have the official October one enrollment. And you also have, you should also have in your packets, the January one school attending children that identifies, the same report that we provided every year, identifies all of the Berlin and Boylston residents and where they're going to schools. And as you can see, the numbers, we keep talking about this, but it's an important topic. The numbers are still fairly large, you know, both in terms of vocational and choice-out and charter, private and homeschool. And it's definitely a thing, but to continue to talk about it, it's a trend that we need to change. So, that's what those numbers are. Overall, Berlin Memorial is at, this includes the preschool, is at two hundred and one according to the October one numbers. I don't know if that's been adjusted since then. There may have been some shifts in enrollment. Boylston Elementary is at three hundred and sixty and Tohato is at, Tohato is at four hundred and forty-four. The grand total, including out of district, is one thousand twenty-one. So, those numbers have been coming down a little bit. And you also should have, oh, no, you don't have, never mind. I have a report from the Department of Ed that gives us kind of validation of the numbers that we have. So, that was just, just for me, for my own backup. So, I don't know if people want to spend time on this. We can certainly talk through that, but if you have questions about it?
Any questions?
Just a comment on the number of the charter school. Twenty-four for Berlin and twenty-six for Boylston. Like we've been saying, we'll have to do something about that. And I was going to offer if the committee wanted me to assist, I think Lynn and Rebecca on the management subcommittee? Not management, what was the name of that?
Marketing?
Marketing.
Well, that would be...
As a region.
As a Berlin Memorial.
Because Lynn's not on Berlin Memorial, so...
Right. So...
I was just going to ask if you were, you know, I'm sure she'll help cover it, but...
Oh, yeah. I was just thinking, but it's a regional subcommittee, so...
Don't bring it up, but the regional meeting.
Yeah, I think we could, right?
Well, leave it at that or I could just attend the meetings if they're posted.
Yeah. I would imagine that we open meetings.
Right. That's why I asked that at the last meeting.
Just so the Berlin community knows that, the regional committee voted to have, create two subcommittees, one which will take on the charge of doing some public relations, but also trying to figure out why we have the exodus we do and trying to promote our own schools. And that's kind of the basic charge of that subcommittee. And then there's another subcommittee that will be studying the structure that we currently have and just issues regarding that or thoughts process. So, at some point in time, I believe those subcommittees will be looking for community members or teachers or whoever would like to participate, getting information, all sorts of tasks that we will hopefully take on. But those will be subcommittees of the regional school committee, I believe.
I think it would be great if you could attend and just update, you know, the Berlin meetings, update us.
Just to make a point about some of the categories, our vocational, number of vocational students has actually come down. When I first got here, I think it was fifty-one or so. Now, it's at forty, with twenty-one from Berlin and nineteen from Boylston. And I know a lot of people talk about charter schools, but our choice-out number is sixty-eight and our charter school number is fifty. So, even though it costs more for charter schools, there are more students that are choosing through the choice program than there are charter schools. So, that's also a big one that really needs to be paid attention to. And of course, the big one on the list is private schools. And there's a hundred and twenty-seven students who live in Berlin and Boylston are going to private schools. So, there's forty-five in Berlin and eighty-two from Boylston and then nineteen homeschool. So, I guess, and I've said this before, I would recommend that the group not pay, pay attention to all of those categories of schools and not just charter. In the choice-out, we've got students, you know, as early as kindergarten. There's, there's seven from Boylston at the elementary level and thirteen from Berlin at the elementary level. So, those are, those are numbers that need to be paid attention to as well, I think. Okay. Suppose I have that. School calendar, the last day of school, last day of school for Berlin Memorial is the twenty-third. And I actually have on here that it's an early release. Is that correct? That's correct. I'm getting head nods, so that's correct. And that's because of all the snow days and as well as the results of the negotiations. So, just to make sure everybody's aware, the last day of school is the twenty-third and that's a half day, June twenty-third. So, that's that.
Do we have to vote that?
No, because it's actually within the calendar that included the five snow days that we already had voted and approved. So, it's not, if it was outside of those days, then we'd have to, you'd have to change the calendar, but it's within those days. So, you do not have to vote that. And then we do not have a finance report, correct? Because we already gave the budget hearing. And then principals' report.
Sure. I first wanted to just take a moment to thank the three PTOs from Berlin and Boylston and Tohato for coming together to coordinate last night's parent anti-boiling forum. They worked very hard to try to advertise. They brought goodies and it was just really great to see them working together for the first time ever or probably a long time. So, we hope it's the start of a lot of chances to coordinate things together. And I thank those folks who were involved in that. We didn't get a big turnout, but the folks that did come, I think, gained a lot of good information. And hopefully, it's just the start of things to come. I think it's taking the first step.
Carol, can I just ask you, do you know if anyone tele...
They did not.
They did not.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
What was the question?
No one, no one televised, is going to be able to televise it. No one recorded it?
Yeah, we weren't able to get that replaced, yeah.
We tried to find somebody.
You did. I, yeah, Bill and Bill did very hard, tried very hard, but it just didn't happen. So, yeah, unfortunately. But it was a very good, good program. I also quickly, I just wanted to let you know our MCAS, our ELA MCAS have been completed as of the beginning of this week, so we move on to math in May. And then finally, just a reminder that our art show, our annual art show, is taking place on Thursday from six to eight P M. place on Thursday from six to eight P M., so please come and see the beautiful, beautiful artwork that Gail Joseph has worked with the children to create, and that will be available, it's hanging all over the school already, so please come and see this work.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the business items.
Do you have school choice recommendations?
We do, and I do think I need Carol to help me with some of this. We have, we do have recommendations, we are recommending quite a few school choice slots. The ones in the kindergarten are actually, I think, other than two, are actual requests, and three of those are siblings, and then, two of those are additional requests, so there's two empty slots. So, you'll notice that we're asking for really ten more school choice students than we now have, and part of that is to help build up or fill in some of the, some of the grades that we have, some low enrollments, which we've talked about, and some of that is to try to build up some of the finances. We did match those up, and you noticed you also have the Boylston Elementary School numbers on there as well. We matched those up, the requests up with the Boylston Elementary School, to make sure that we're not adding too many. We like to keep any one, any, any one grade across both elementary schools, no more than ten at the elementary schools, that gives us plenty of room at, at Tohato when they move up. So, we feel like this is a legitimate recommendation, it won't require us to add staff, which we absolutely want to kind of stay away from, all of what we would have in the school would remain, it would just bring more revenues in. And one of the reasons that we're not relying on assuming that we actually get these numbers, because we won't know until probably well after the town meeting, whether or not we can count on those monies. So, it's another reason why that last part of the recommendation for reducing the budget is a question mark, because some of it, some of which, we don't know what revenues we have, even though we're still spending half as much, sorry, we're spending twice as much as we're bringing in, it would just help to build up the pool, I'm not so sure that we would recommend moving it over into the budget line as well. So, and I do believe, Carol, I'm gonna have to ask you to help me with this, the remaining recommended school choice are not actual school choice requests, they're slots that we would like to fill.
Yes.
Okay. So, the school choice students that are in the fourth column over from the left are students that we, that currently are attending Berlin, and then, the additional recommended is on top of that.
So, you're talking thirty-two students, possibly?
Thirty.
Four, mean thirty-four, you're adding the twelve, the twenty-two?
Yep, adding an additional twenty-two, which is a lot.
Do you think, I'm looking at the kindergarten level, so thirty-five at the kindergarten level, do you think, how do you think that would be with the size of those classes? Are you anticipating some of these children being half-day students, or, 'cause that seems kind of a large, maybe, or not for most towns, but for Berlin.
Well, it really isn't a half-day, they're a half-day.
It's not a half-day program.
But, but some kids, maybe.
You know, our expectation is that there will be a handful, if that, that are actually going to, to not have their children in full day.
Okay.
So, it's really, it's, it's, it's full-day programs for the majority of the students.
So, then I'll go back to my original question, do you think thirty-five is?
Seventeen in a class?
Yeah. Kindergarteners, I mean, we're not talking fourth grade, and I'm not the educator here, I'm not pretending to be, but.
It's, 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 it's an okay-sized kindergarten class. I mean, I know we're used to twelve and fifteen across the school, but it's really an okay kindergarten class. Now, there's two, there's two empty slots in there, so you could certainly, you know, suggest that we bring in five and not the seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just waiting.
Well, I'm not as concerned as Dr. McDermott is about the number of school choice kids in each class, I'm more concerned about the total enrollment for, say, for example, kindergarten across both towns. So, if I added the thirty-five and sixty-three from Berlin and Boylston for total enrollment, it comes up to about ninety-eight, and that's, that's, you know, concerning. That's the highest one of all of them. If I did my math right, I think grade one would be seventy-five, grade two would be eighty-nine, grade three would be eighty-six, grade four would be seventy-nine, grade five seventy-three, and grade six is eighty-seven. They've got a big sixth grade over in Boylston or something, or we do. And I know when we've looked at school, you know, numbers at Tohato, we tried to stay under a hundred, so ninety-eight is really close, and I agree with Nikki, if we just didn't do maybe two of those seven. I know we're in.
That would be, that would be okay, I mean.
I was, I mean, I, I, I know we're having budget issues, I don't know that this is gonna solve this year's budget issues, though. Didn't, tell, remind me now, you said you had, how many are just open slots that you don't have kids?
Two.
Two, and they are not at the kindergarten level, I would imagine?
Yeah, yes.
They are? Oh, okay. So, you actually have five bodies and two open slots?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know if you meant overall.
Well, we have, three, three of the five are siblings.
Not that I really mean.
This is just at the kindergarten.
Right.
Right.
And then, two of them are actual requests, so we don't have two actual bodies yet, but we're just trying to leave open the slot for two more.
When you said that before, I wasn't sure if you were talking over all the grades.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you were just talking kindergarten grade four, okay.
The rest of the grades are all open slots, that we don't have requests.
Okay, so they are definitely open slots, and you don't have anyone on a waiting list for that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it could certainly reduce the kindergarten requests by two, and then, we would have all of the requests that we would have available.
Okay. I would go along with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, 'cause I think just, I know that by the time these kindergarteners get to Tohato, there probably will be less of them, but you never know.
Well, it's the marketing, maybe there'll be.
Maybe there'll be twice as many.
Right.
And if, well, yeah. And if they were, and if they were Berlin residents, then that would be a great problem to have. Absolutely.
So, I'd make a motion, do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I would make a motion to just reduce the number of seven students recommended for kindergarten, and otherwise, go with what's recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Two thousand eleven, twelve calendar?
So, we're sort of in the same position that we've been in, we'd like to get this, as it now stands, approved. We did reach out, we didn't do an exhaustive outreach for input, but we did send it to parent groups and to the schools, and we didn't get a lot of input, the, the most common piece of information that we got was to start school after Labor Day, so we're not gonna recommend that, actually. So, the calendar that we proposed to you before is what we're recommending, the only thing we don't have, 'cause we're still in negotiations, is professional development days. Other than that, we've assumed everything is the way it is, and so, we're asking for an approval of this calendar, knowing that negotiations may change, I mean, whether it's professional development days or whatever else is being discussed at that point. But at least we can kind of, we can communicate this to folks, so they know the most important things that parents are really wanting to know, when is school starting, when are the vacations, and, you know, the few or the others in there, so. So, we're recommending that the calendar, as it stands, is what is approved at this point.
Any questions?
What kind of feedback did you get on the, did you, did you get feedback on, like, the day before Thanksgiving and Good Friday, or anything like that? No?
No, there was, there was a couple of comments on Good Friday, which were, put it back, but not, we didn't really get a lot of, of feedback, just in general.
Put it back, meaning don't have school?
Uh, right, correct, do not have school, right. But, but there were two, so we didn't, and we, again, we didn't do a, an exhaustive reach out like we did the first year, because we were really trying to do those vacations, so.
And.
We felt like either people were okay with where it was, or, so.
Yeah. What about, I don't know whether you have the feedback from Tohato, if they're pretty much had the same sort of thing?
Yeah, right, yeah. In fact, mo, most of that feedback about Labor Day was from, actually came from Tohato.
Okay.
I thought it was really interesting, the number of people that wanted to have school start at the Labor Day.
They like going till July, too.
So, do we not vote the last day of school? It's just not indicated on the calendar part, it's indicated under June two thousand twelve, but we don't put it on here.
I'm sorry, say that again, I was just actually reading some input from Berlin. There was a comment about observing New Year's on twelve-thirty in order to return to school on January first. So, okay, sorry, what was the question?
Is, is the last day of school, what day would that be?
Do you have, what's under June, under this in the middle, but it's not marked on the calendar, and just usually.
Right, so.
So, the last day would be June fifteenth?
Right, June fifteenth, and then add the five snow days on top of that, if you have those. And that is, as the current contract is, which is a hundred and eighty-seven staff days and a hundred and eighty-one student days. So, again, whatever happens in negotiation, they may not impact that, I don't know.
So, you are looking for a vote?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve the calendars presented. A second.
Any more discussion? A vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
You have policy I M G, animals in school?
Yes, and this should be a second read, is it? I think so.
Yeah, we've already voted.
Actually, I guess, yeah, and, right, and voted at Tohato, so it's really to bring the policy to Berlin Memorial School Committee, so you could actually officially vote it, so that could be part of the book.
Can we make a motion to approve policy I M G?
For a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed something. What is it? Animals in school?
I M G.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna copy, we have.
It has, it has to do with a combination of things, one is to make sure that people know that dog, animals of services, like seeing on dogs, but also that you, we can use small horses for services, but it also talks about animals that are prohibited from school. So, wild animals, domestic stray animals, so it kind of gives us guidance on what animals should or shouldn't be in school, and why.
I like those, they're not a lot. Speak to them.
I guess we also need to, I'm sorry, I skipped the Moses Reed Tyler Scholarship, both myself and Mrs. Young and Donnie Rodman has agreed to participate on that committee, so that's the update.
So, I was just looking at the minutes from the last meeting, and we appointed you and Carol.
Correct.
You want to appoint Donna also?
She, she was willing to do it.
Okay.
So, I would like to appoint Donnie Rodman to the Reed Tyler, Reed Tyler Scholarship, or the Mary Tyler Moore Scholarship.
Whatever you like to call it.
That's what we call it.
Nikki likes to call it.
That's what Nikki calls it.
Okay. Now, do we have any comments from the public, other than animals in our school? Any additional comments from the school committee?
I was just gonna ask you, you wanted to update people on that personnel subcommittee at the region, and here we are, we're in the process of.
Okay, yeah, we are, we are in the process, we've held interim superintendent interviews, a full night of them, and we just had one this evening. I'm not sure a hundred percent what the next steps are gonna be, we're gonna do some reference checks, and hopefully, if it all works out, be able to come up with some kind of decision on April thirteenth at the regional meeting, if all goes according to plan. So, that's what's going on with that. Anything, anything else you guys like to add to that, your?
Good job.
We all set? Okay, future agenda items.
Just thinking about the.
We don't have any meetings next week.
Well, at some point, if we want to go back and talk about the budget.
Right, the budget.
And I know from the minutes that we were still, we still have something about the adult bullying and a future agenda item.
And where is the next meeting in lines with the town meeting?
Two or three days after.
The next school committee meeting, is it two or three days?
Right. Town meeting is, I think, May second or third, and school committee meeting is Wednesday right after that. Town meeting, Monday is the second, and school committee meeting is the fourth.
So, we need to prepare for town meeting, whatever we need to do.
I, I just want to let you know that I will probably be out of town, when is the region meeting, the twenty-sixth?
Uh, there's, there's a region meeting scheduled for the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, I think I'll probably be out, out of town the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And then, I'll be back Monday.
Okay.
The town meeting.
Okay, we will plan accordingly.
So, if you're gonna, you know, want to pass a meeting, I'm pretty flexible, I don't know.
Okay.
But other than that.
Right, and it looks like we do have need for executive session?
Yes.
For the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation, or purposes of discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining. And we need a roll, roll call vote to enter in to executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not to return into open session, except to return, correct? Sorry.